Getting everybody and just a reminder for the audience and city council members and everybody to silence their cell phones. Okay. Do we have any special presentations or announcements this evening, Mr. Ledbetter?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments, uh, this is time for public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matter matters listed consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item note on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for a public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane and disruptive remarks. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This timeframe is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concerns, an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when the item is open for a public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Should you need additional special accommodations, remote microphone, please note, please notice the city clerk prior to start of the meeting for arrangements. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have it, documents to present, please write a minimum of seven. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Public comments is a period not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with us council or city staff. Have any public comments at this time? All right, please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Mason McCoy. I'll read this because I sort of lose track of what I'm saying thinking.
All right.
And I bear put my glasses on.
Might have put the microphone up just a little bit. So I can hear you. You helping Jason? There we go.
Do I give my name yet?
Yep.
After the city council meeting two weeks ago, my wife and I went home and discussed meeting. Almost had an argument, not quite. Sally made the statement to really couldn't blame you voting for the housing element because you really didn't have any other options. My position was we need more housing, but the housing element was not the way to go. After a while, we came to conclusion, we were both right. You didn't have any other good options. In years past through laws and ordinances, there have been barriers set up to steer you in certain directions. And it is not just you. City councils all over the nation are facing same dilemma. This is agenda 21. It works like the cattleman or sheep herders who build wings on their growl to make it easier to herd the animals in. In our case, those wings go back 50 years behind us. In 1960, at the United Nations General Assembly, Nikita Khrushchev, Russian premier said, "We will defeat you without firing shot. We will do it from within." Our communist friends have been very busy the last 60 years. In 1963, the list of communist goals were entered into the congressional as an excerpt from Naked Communists. Most of the goals have been achieved. The few are partially done. Only one, number 45, has not made it off the ground yet. I have a list of 45 goals to give you. Also would like to give you a copy of book I wrote 13 years ago. It's outdated a little bit. Like on who's president and some of the politicians. I fear for the future of our country. We are witnessing the silent coup and so far we're on the losing end of it. People need to wake up as to what is happening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have any other further, anybody else for a public comment? No, all right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. We'll move on to consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item from discussion. A approval ratification of payments issued from January 30th, 2023 through February 12th, 2023.
Join the meeting.
Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held February 7th, 2023. Cash balances, quarterly report on investments, budget and actual and fiscal performance reports for December 2022. Adopt resolution 2306 approving the city's comprehensive salary schedule for the calendar year 2023. Approval of the waiver for employment of a family member presented to the recognition code O2-50-020. Continuation urgency ordinance number 864 fireworks. Wave, wave full text reading or sorry of all ordinances on the agenda. Ordnances shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Uh, this is the recommended city actual, um, city action motion to adopt consent agenda of the city council, uh, the city of Wairega as presented, so. I will go to the public for any public comment regarding the consent agenda. No public comment? I will go to, um, the city council, uh, for any questions or public comment? Any council members have? No questions, public comment, question? Okay, Mr. Davis?
I see we're talking about the fireworks thing a little later. And so if we go with this consent agenda, that interfere with that conversation, will it, as the mayor?
I don't believe so, no. But it, Mr. Ledbetter?
No, it will have no effect.
Thank you.
Separate, okay. Two separate items, all right? Okay. No question coming over the council, do I have a motion?
Hi, Dwayne Kegel make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as, as presented?
I have a motion to floor by Councilman Keg. I have a second.
I, Paul McCoy will second that.
And a second from Pro Tim McCoy. I will do roll call. Councilman, uh, Keg.
I.
Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker.
I.
Councilman, uh, Pro Tim McCoy.
I.
And I, 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 I. Whole business, okay. City manager. Uh, agenda title prom on minor street follow-up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council for the city of Wairega. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. As you're aware, the Wairega High School came before the Wairega City Council requesting the closure of Minor Street for the Wairega High School, uh, 2023 prom in May. Although the city staff was, uh, was able to find another city in the state that had performed a similar shutdown, uh, the Wairega Police Chief reached out to the police chief for Pleasanton, California to get more information on how that event took place. And it turned out that the timing of the COVID shutdown did in fact allow for Pleasanton to have a similar event a couple of years ago. Uh, but they would not repeat a similar event in the future as they would not be able to successfully close the street town. On February 14th, city staff and the mayor met with representatives of the Wairega High School to flesh out the feasibility of, of prom on minor. Once it was explained that the Wairega Police Department would not legally be allowed to restrict access to Minor Street from the general public. Uh, an alternative location was sought by Wairega High School. The alternative location is the city of Wairega Community Center and we are here before you, uh, before the Wairega City Council tonight requesting approval of the fee waiver of $250 for this facility fee and a waiver of the estimated $500 building attendant fee cost. And we do have the young gentleman here tonight that may want to come up and say a few words.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to come up here again. Um, our main issue with minor prom on minor street was really the safety with it. Um, I had a conversation with Mrs. Dawes before the meeting about safety and what we could do. Um, I would highly suggest that we go ahead and allow our students to use the community center. Not only have, um, it sounds like, uh, former teachers in the past, including Mrs. Dawes have used it, but it's a great and beautiful venue for our students to use. I mean, I think with the resources that I have, I can make a beautiful prom to send off our seniors to give them the memories they deserve to eventually bring their kids back here. Um, that's why I please suggest, uh, help us with this.
All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any, um, open up to public comment regarding the request from the Wairega High School to use our recommend you center for their prom and ask for the waiver? Okay, no public comment. Um, I will go to the city council for any public comment or questions? Speaker, Councilman Baker?
Thank you. The question that I have, um, for, um, the city manager is, do we have any kind of written policy in place for the process to request a fee waiver for the use of this building? And have we waived these fees for other people in the past?
I am not familiar of the waiving of fees during my tenure, but that's because of COVID, I believe. I believe the history is within the community theater and the community center. Uh, waiving of fees generally to the high school, if I understand correctly. Um, but I am not familiar with any policy currently, but I'm looking up at the assistant city manager. She may be as far as the process for waiving of fees.
There has been in the past, um, a set number of events that would be waived and that was rescinded, but we can reevaluate that.
So that was, uh, in the past, it sounds like there was a commitment on a set number within a given time period that the city council would waive thereby giving authority to the city manager, uh, to move forward. And ultimately, we're definitely bringing this back to you guys this evening because it started here and we want you to see the conclusion.
Thank you. So, you know, um, Mr. Ledbetter, that's my concern that, uh, if we're going to be waiving fees for, um, one, um, organization, then we, I believe that we need to have a process in place um, and a policy in place to waive fees.
Mr. K, Councilman K?
Just comment on that. We, um, I know in the past we, we have waived fees on, on, uh, community center and community theater, um, and on this, like you said, depend on the event and probably would be something we definitely should check into, um, getting some type of policy in place. Yes, I, I, I definitely agree. So that way we're not showing any favoritisms on, on certain people in certain places. So I agree, but yes, we have done it before. Um, something we should pursue in the future of trying to get some type of policy in place. Um, I think all this, you know, the high school is a valuable asset, so I don't think there's an issue on that part. I think, but like you said, playing Sean favoritism on anything would be something we'd have to figure out, but um, that's all I comment, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman K. Mr. Davis?
I, I agree with Colleen. I was, that was going to be my comment, uh. I discussed that at home with my significant guy. We both thought that maybe there needs to be some type of uh, process and, uh, maybe Mr. Mayor, we could suggest that our city manager would draw one together and maybe bring it back, uh, in the future.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, this is, uh, Councilman McCoy. I don't disagree, but I think we need to look at it in a broader sense. Um, I think the stage has always been an issue for us. Um, I think we need to look at and, and the stage is loaned out and we recoup no money from it. And I've said this before to three different councils and we, they've all, well, the first two have agreed that we'll never be able to replace that stage again at whatever it is, 30 or 40 or $50,000 now. So, um, I think that it behooves us to look at not only areas like the community center, the theater, but I mean, also, um, looking at, say, throw the stage in there because that, those seem to be the places we use for special events. You know, the chamber uses a, well, I shouldn't say, they used to, there's not enough people now for the, for them to use the community center, but we used to get 200, 300 people at the community center. I think last year we got, a year ago, we got 50 for the chamber dinner. Was it 50 or 52? Yeah. So the chamber, that was way too big. So I would just, as a council, I think we need to look at it. I, I think we can ask, I would ask that, uh, the office start looking into it. But I think we're going to have to give more direction to, more specific direction to the, um, uh, to the city. And I think that requires us as a council to look into it, to delve into a little bit uh, more to see what there is that we have out there that we are, because we don't want to be doing it like 30 times for 30 different, you know, venues or places or things that we might, um, loan or rent out. I'm done.
Thank you, Pro Tim McCoy. What is the policy we have, Mr. Ledbetter, that we have in place for our streets? Would we, I mean, there's nothing to do with this, but I know we have an agreement because some people ask for waivers that we block the streets off on certain events. And so we waive that fee or for certain organizations as well. So what is that policy? We have a policy for that as well, written?
The policy on events is to bring each event, the, the city council makes that determination on a one-on-one basis. And so I certainly agree with council member Baker because Mayor Middleton, you bring up a great point and that is ultimately on a number of events in my tenure. Inevitably, there's a lot of costs associated with an event, not under this circumstance, but when you shut that street down uh, that requires public works to come in on a Saturday and there's overtime pay that's never truly, um, captured. And ultimately the goal for this staff is to now with Ms. Baker have a policy, but ultimately budget properly so that if a fee were to be waived, that would come out of the city council, essentially the city council budget. And the fee would be waived, but public works would get compensated if that makes sense, so that the money transfers, but it may not just, it just may not come from, uh, the individual organization making the request, but if public works is going to have fees waived by city council, it is only fair that they get recouped that cost.
Thank you. Um, so it's under the discretion of the city council to adopt the waivers for special requests from the organization or from the high school, like what they're getting tonight. Correct?
That is my understanding currently, but I can certainly, um, take a look at some policies and we can bring something back in the coming couple of months.
Okay. Um, great. I just want to comment on, uh, giving kudos to the staff regarding trying to find a way for you guys to have this on minor street. We all met, we, they worked hard. Uh, Chief Gilman, our city manager, everyone made calls to, um, really try to make a way for you to have it on minor street. It was a great idea. An outside the box idea. I give you lots of kudos for coming before us and coming with a great idea. And unfortunately, just the logistics of, you know, the security for the students in this, the way it was, this wasn't going to be feasible. So, um, so thank you. And, um, I think Mr. McCoy has another question? Oh. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. And can you, um, restate your name? I'm sorry for the record.
Oh, sorry. My name's David Nelson and I want to say thank you so much. I didn't think I would be standing up here at all. And it's just really, really enlightening just to be able to see how our government functions, to see how our people in Sisiu County or Wairega are represented. And I really appreciate you guys working so hard on behalf of the high school. Thank you and thank you so much. I, I really do appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay, so, uh, we have the recommend city council action motion to waive the facility and building attendant fees for the Wairega High School senior prom to be held May 6th, 2023 at the Wairega Community Center.
This is, uh, Councilman McCoy and, um, I will, uh, still moved and I want to thank David Nelson and I want to thank, uh, Principal Dawes and everybody at the high school for working with our staff. And David, I want to commend you on coming up with a alternative place to go. Okay? At the community center. Thank you.
I have a second. I have a motion from, uh, okay, I have a motion from, uh, Pro Tim McCoy and then I have a second from Councilman Keg. I will take roll call. Councilman Keg.
I.
Councilman Davis.
I.
Uh, Councilman Baker.
I.
Uh, Councilman, um, Pro Tim McCoy.
I.
And I will be, I, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening. Goodbye, have a good night. And then, um, Mr. Ledbetter, I think, uh, you got direction from, uh, Councilman Davis, Councilman Baker and myself to help for a policy and the rest of the council for a policy regarding future events and waivers and all that jazz.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. No, I did not appoint you to nothing. Yes, I did. Five committees. All right. Sorry. Yeah. We are, and, um, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. Be recap a special event known as Wairega City, uh, the, uh, City Wairega's Nights of Lights in consideration $10,000 sponsorship for the special event known as Gold Rush Days, June 10th through the 11th, 2023. Discover, Discover Siskiyou has requested a, for temporary street closures for the special event known as Gold Rush Days 2023 scheduled for Saturday, June 10th through the 11th, 2023. Discover Siskiyou as the event organizer is questing $10,000 match waiver of the stage rental fee, 250 per day. And in-kind services from public work, street closures, stage setup and extra trash removal. It is got, Discover Siskiyou expects to be able to batch $20,000 for the event. Total visitor attendance is expected to be over 5,000 during the two-day event.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairega City Council, Jason Ledbetter, your city manager here once again. Just to give the, um, complete city council, my understanding that I learned in 2022 was that the city council considers there to be three city events. And those city events are Night of Lights, a Holiday Parade and Gold Rush Days. So when we're talking about Night of Lights with the EDC or Discover Siskiyou or Gold Rush Days, we're not talking about them advocating to come in here and put on an event. We teamed up with them because the city council wanted to see those events happen annually. Whereas anybody is welcome to come in front of city council and attempt to put on their own event within the city. So just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. So the Wairega City Council approved Discover Siskiyou to manage the 2022 Night of Lights event last year. The event was sponsored by the city of Wairega with a $10,000 donation in coordination of street closed, closures, et cetera. And Discover Siskiyou matched the city of Wairega donation and doubled it for $20,000 match for a grand total of a $30,000 event. In the past, the city of Wairega had partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and last year with the merchants to put on Gold Rush Days, but the donation was just $5,500. Based on the great turnout for 2022 Night of Lights and the opportunity to have the same tier of funding dedicated to Gold Rush 2023, we are asking that the city council adopt resolution 2023-07 approving street closures and other requests for Discover Siskiyou special event known as Gold Rush Days 2023 and approve a supplemental appropriation of $11,000 in fiscal year 2022, 2023 as the city's cash and in-kind contribution to the event. So there would be a $10,000 donation and then very similar, um, council member Baker, roughly a thousand dollars in kind for services rendered. Um, with that said, I'd like to introduce, I believe, uh, Sarah and possibly Heather are on the line from Discover Siskiyou. And if, uh, Ms. Hogan, if you have that link for the brief video to show of Night of Lights?
Okay. We'll pause for a minute. We're waiting for the video to load, um, for those on Discover Siskiyou that are holding.
No problem.
We're just waiting for it to download.
While we're waiting, would it be helpful if we did a little verbal overview of, um, how that event went? Yeah. So, uh, my colleague. Oh, wait. I think we're close.
We can hear you still. So whoever wants to go first and go and introduce yourself.
Yeah, for sure. So I'm, I'm Heather Dodds. I'm program director for Discover Siskiyou and my colleague Sarah Eberens is here as well. And I'm going to hand it over to her, um, to give you guys an event recap from Night of Lights. Um, I did want to mention that the way that we get this data is, um, from a really cool software program called placer.ai. Um, it's a location analytics tool that helps us study, um, visit trends, trade areas and demographics. So um, we're able to geo fence really specific areas such as the entire length of Minor Street, um, for a specific time. So we were able to geo fence Minor Street during Night of Lights, um, to look at, um, but traffic that night and then kind of use that to study the impact of the event. So I will hand it over to Sarah to give you a few of those details.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. I'm Sarah from Discover Siskiyou and the EDC. And yeah, um, using the software that we have, we had a total of 3.8,000 recorded visits, visits to the Wairega Downtown Historic District on December 3rd with an average on December third with an average dwell time of eighty-five minutes and a significant group staying over a hundred and fifty minutes. Um forty-one point five percent of those visitors were from zip codes outside of Wairika. So it was a really good tourist drawing event. Um almost uh up to half. Um we did have a Facebook event that reached out to twenty-two thousand people. Um and the event page showed over thirteen hundred uh folks engaged with the Facebook Facebook event. Overall, it was a huge success and we've had lots of positive feedback from both the city staff and the public. And it looks like this video is ready for you. So enjoy.
That video is a lot more impressive with sound, I will say. Um but if you want to see the full thing, um you can go to this is you EDC Facebook page. It is there. Um and I'll note that we we produced this video with the intention of using it to promote future events. Um but we did want to show it to you tonight just because it is such a great representation of how well that night went. So um does the council have any questions as far as the recap of Night of Lights go?
Any council members have, first I'll go to to when we go to public comment first. And public, any public commenter questions regarding EDC and their proposal? No? Okay, now I'll go to council members if they have any questions for. All right.
Okay, well, let's, I guess. Do you want to just get into the request for Gold Rush Days then?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, um I was just asking if you would like to just go ahead and get into the request for Gold Rush Days.
Yes, please.
I can answer Mr. Davis's question. My understanding is graduation would fall on the same proposed date uh June tenth and eleventh, which ultimately depending on the way you look at it would mean it's going to be a very fantastic event because people would be graduating and inevitably spilling into downtown with their families that were from out of town. Uh so my understanding is graduation is that same weekend.
Sure, I'll add too. I apologize. My audio um keeps freezing, so I'm going to try turning off my video to see if that helps.
It's June tenth. So that would mean Jackson shouldn't be on the eighth. Cause that's a big event, eighth grade graduation away because a huge event.
Yeah, hold on, Heather. They're talking about graduation, so we'll get to you in one second. Okay, now we'll go ahead and get into the request.
Oh, okay, yes. Um so we are requesting um street closures of minor and Broadway. Um special support requests are barricades at the street closures. And we are asking for the Wairika City stage to be placed at the corner of minor and Broadway, which I think we've been told that that is kind of the one place it can go. So assuming that that should be good. Um we are wanting to reserve support equipment, including um the stage barricades, porta potties and additional trash cans and trash removal. Um it was our understanding that um the stage fee would be covered by the city, but that our team would be responsible for securing insurance on the stage. Um and then, yeah, we've been working with Jason Ledbetter and the city on coordination with Public Works um and creating a traffic control plan. We have notified the Wairika Police Department and the Wairika Fire Department about the potential event. And we do plan to work with Caltrans for a lane closure and encroachment permissions as needed. Um but we, you know, haven't wanted to get too deep into the planning until um we heard what you had to say about this proposal. So as far as our scope of work, the Discover Cisco team will secure insurance. Um we will secure entertainment and I will get into that in a bit. Um as far as what we envisioned for this event. Um we will take care of marketing. We will do um a nice kind of branded Facebook event page. We'll do some paid ads. We will have a full website to promote the event. Um we will have online vendor applications that we will take care of. We will source and approve licensed retail and food vendors. And all food vendors will have business licenses, excuse me, all vendors will have business licenses with Wairika or will complete the application for a daily event permit. Um alcohol sales will be allowed per licensed merchants and per ABC event permit. And consumption will be limited to within the event perimeter. We will post appropriate signage at each barricaded entry points to the event area. Um as far as some of the event elements that we are pursuing, um we have, you know, our mission at Discover Cisco is to bring outsiders into our community for overnight visits. So kind of to make this event fit with Discover Cisco's mission, um we really wanted to make it a two-day event, encouraging those overnight visits and to really take this amazing community event and just add to it. So some of those ideas that we had and Sarah has done some of the legwork for already would be bringing in an appraiser to have kind of an antiques roadshow um style booth where people could bring in their antiques to get appraised. Um we would like to have a beer and cocktail garden area. Um my personal favorite is bringing in a mechanical bull for some bull riding. Um we'll have an old west photo booth, um pony or carriage rides, gold panning, food trucks, a lot of the backdrops um for selfie opportunities, picnic tables so people can hang out and eat. Um and then we're also looking at bringing in some live music and then a really cool kind of live show like we did at Night of Lights that gets the crowd involved. And so we might have um yeah, just a couple performers who are kind of roaming the street and getting getting the crowd involved with that. Um we will also potentially have a DJ to be playing music. Um we got a lot of positive feedback from that um during Night of Lights. So it's um an element that we would like to bring back. So that is kind of our plan.
Thank you, Heather. Um any questions for the council for his daughter? I'm sorry, I forgot her name. Sorry about that. Mr. Keg, Councilman Keg has a question for.
Are you guys open for any other suggestions on on the Gold Rush Days?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Cause uh um I I put on quite a few of them, so I know a few little things on that. But um one of the suggestions I would like to present to you guys is have you guys thought about doing a cornhole tour tournament? Cause cornhole right now is huge across the United States and they actually um um Medford puts them on regularly. They just had a sanction event just recently up there in Medford on a cornhole tournament. And I know a lot of people around Wairika area are really involved in cornhole now. Um used to be horseshoes used to be the big thing. Now it's cornhole. So um I don't know if it's something you guys would um look at and trying to do, cause I know I have some connections on getting um that uh going forward, actually, because I know some of the people that put on the event on the cornhole tournaments up in Medford and stuff. So you guys are receptive on that.
I love that. If you wouldn't mind passing along your contacts, I definitely think that's something we could look into.
Yeah, I'd love to.
A great idea. Okay.
It's been in the past for um some of these other areas, Medford and stuff. Um the one that they just recently put on up in Medford was a san- a sanctioned event and it brought people from all over the West Coast.
Cool.
Yeah, it's it's getting huge, real huge. Watch, I don't know if you guys ever watched it on TV, but it's actually a lot of fun.
I didn't even know it was on TV.
Gilman would like that one, too.
All right.
Yeah, we're definitely interested in bringing in some friendly competitions and audience participation um as well as, yeah, something that would be more organized from the beginning that would draw groups to organize and come and have some friendly cornhole in the street or in the park. Sounds good.
Cool.
Awesome. I can win Councilman Cake. That's a great, great idea. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. So um this sounds really, really exciting and I'm looking forward to it. Um would you consider this a family event?
Yes, hundred percent.
So um I really would like to see this be a dry event. Um there are seven businesses within two blocks that have um their license to serve um alcohol. And I just really would ask that you would consider making this a dry event so that it's more family friendly. And then I saw in the paperwork where you guys will be coordinating with all of the merchants in the area. So um I appreciate that you guys will be reaching out to them. I think that it said personally um to include them. Um so I appreciate that. And then um I just have a question um about the resolution because there's a paragraph that I didn't, I just don't understand. So um I don't know who to direct that question to, Mr. Ledbetter.
Uh you can direct it towards me.
Yeah, okay. So um on the first page of the resolution.
Reda? Oh. Okay, we lost our screen for a minute.
The second paragraph um from the bottom. Whereas a permissive business license may be granted by the city council for an event of this nature. If that issuance of the license will not be detrimental to the public peace, public health or public morals of the city, which tax is subject to an exemption if the applicant demonstrates that the activity is for charitable pers- purposes or for exhibition on historical subjects whenever the receipts from the activity are to be appropriated for any benevolent purpose within the limits of the city. What does that mean?
So essentially, you need to have a business license to have a kiosk at an event. And we have business licenses specifically that are temporary. They're not like their normal business licenses. And just the verbiage that I'm hearing is, let's say, the genealogy wanted to have a kiosk that ultimately uh we would not charge them for a business license because they ultimately are there as a historical kind of historical society. That's my interpretation.
That's that's how it was set up.
Thank you.
Why would be another one?
So I really uh just want to reiterate uh my request that um you would consider making this a dry event. And that's all the comments that I have. Thank you.
Council Baker, are you having um regarding Mrs. Baker's um comment, is are you having a beer booth or is it just the restaurants are? I mean, because the restaurants can serve alcohol down there because it'll be open during business hours, so they would be able to serve alcohol, correct?
Right. It was our uh it was our plan to have kind of a beer garden. So like a designated area. And I think we would probably be like a wristband system um to get in and out. And it was kind of our feeling, A, that is attractive to people, right, as part of an event. So we thought it might be a good drop for getting perhaps people from Reading or Southern Oregon to come down um as well as keep people who are kind of imbibing in that into a contained area. Um but if it is really important to the council that it be a dry event, I do think that is something uh we could consider for sure.
Well, as one recommendation from a one council member, I don't know if the council, they'll have to discuss that when it comes around. They would like that. Then oh, then I say, Mr. uh McCoy has a question, but I think it's directed for
but um I think the ABC would not allow alcohol to come out of, say, strings. That's not, that would be
Well, no, yeah.
And they're gonna, they would lose their license for that.
Maybe they could go in and drink in establishment. The alcohol will be there. Yeah.
So my my question is for, and this is kind of a oddball question for the chief, but it it has it come to the point now where where it might be thought of that we need to put K rail at the end of, like at the end of minor down near the fire department and down near where minor goes one way in order to for safety reasons, traffic safety reasons, I don't know. I I mean, I know that's be be a real pain in the neck for the city, but I'm just wondering from your standpoint, do we worry about that in this in our little small town? I mean, you know, I know you worry about it in Sacramento. You worry about it in Reading. You worry about it in you know, in New York and San Francisco, but you know.
So most places do do that. That is Chief Gilman. Um when I was in New Orleans, they did that, that dark roads. So it's up to the city. If it's a safety issue, you can put a Jersey burger or something there. You could park the car there. There's something to keep like saying intoxicated driver from driving into a crowd. That's up to the city. I mean, we'll have people there, but accidents do happen. And if this is a safety concern, it's a pretty simple fix, you know, just put a Jersey burger or something.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Only question you have? Okay. And I don't have any further questions, so. Okay, so what are the wishes of the council? The oh, oh, I'm sorry, public comment. I thought I had public comment earlier. No one. Sorry about that. Did you hear the question, Heather Dodds? Okay, his question was last year's event are, it wasn't last year's event, previous um events for the Gold Rush Days had a blanket coverage for the insurance. Last year, each individual um vendor had to get their own insurance to set up and um be at the event. So he's asking if it's going to be a blanket coverage or they have to provide their own insurance at the event for to be a vendor.
Um we confirmed through the process of planning the Night of Lights uh with the insurance certificate that we're pulling. All vendors will be covered within hours. Um I don't know if that was, I don't, I I can't speak to previous years, but yes, all all vendors arriving will um have their own insurance. And then obviously entertainment, bouncy houses, those type of other things will also, those companies will carry their own insurance. But as far as just a um an artisan craft vendor, et cetera, um our insurance will blanket all those guys.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Oh. Any other public comment?
Yeah, uh hang on. I'm Marie Altrich. Um we've been doing, you know, Gold Rush Days since two thousand and eight. All except for the last three years, COVID and then that's insurance. And and each and every single year, it's been alcohol boost every year because that makes a huge draw. And it's never been a problem, never. And we haven't needed the K rail, never been a problem at all. People actually paid attention and 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 then now plans change and I know violence happens, but this is Wairika. You know, Gold Rush Days is a big deal. You know, having the black powder gun sometimes is a pain in the rear when you got a dog, but you know, leave it at home. I leave my service dog at home because of the black powder guns. That's a draw here. We need to come back to, because that's kind of the only draw we get. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any other public comment? Ready, so I will um go to the council, the recommend city council action, the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three. Go to the council, the recommend city council action, the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven approving street closures and other requests for. Discover Siskiyou special event known as Gold Rush Days twenty twenty-three. And approve a supplemental appropriation of eleven thousand dollars in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. As the city's cash and in-kind contribution to the event.
Can we have a discussion?
Go back to discussion? Yes, go back to discussion.
Um, so I really would like the council to consider making this a dry event. This has um, been billed as a family event. And there, like I said, there are seven um, restaurants within a two-block period, but, or two-block um. Place that um. Sell alcohol and, you know, people could go in and have lunch and have a beer, then go in for dinner and have a glass of wine. I just. Um, personally, I don't like to see alcohol served at um, family events. And so I would just re- ask you guys for that consideration. Thanks.
Any other comments?
This Council McCoy, I was gonna say perhaps what we need to do is table this. And we need to put it on as a, as an agenda item for our next meeting, so that we can devote some time to discussing it. And go ahead and move on with the rest of the agenda.
I don't know if we need to table it, do we? I think I'd be, we decide, I mean, I'll go ahead and make a comment if that's okay first. Is, I mean, we have the Siskiyou Golden Fair, that's a. Family event, they serve alcohol. And the others restaurants there. I don't. Is it really just, I mean, is it just a family event? Are you going just for families? You know, described, we get in trouble a lot now, what a family is and what a family event is. So to say this is a family-only event, get us in a lot of trouble. And they could buy, get a lot of trouble saying it's for families only, because that's not the way. We should look at things anymore in the state of California and many other states, defining what a event is designated to or, to or who it's for. So I just want to caution people on that as well. My opinion is, I just think um. It's been that way for years. There's bands, the beer booth, they're responsible down there, that I think. My opinion, it should just be going as has been for years. No disrespect to Councilman Baker and her personal feelings for it, but um, we gotta think about where it has a whole way it's been and what they like. Down there at that event, and it's been very, people like to have a beer on a hot day and. It's my, my opinion as well, but. So I'll go to, anybody else?
Mr. K?
Except for putting it on for many, many years um. On Gold West Days and whatnot, I've been a part of that, play and part of the whole action and. Um, never had any problems before in the past. We've done a series of numerous things we put on. Um, on this event, fun things and it's. Um, how you look at it is, like I said, it's very well supervised and I don't see any issues, like you said, with the fairgrounds. It's done. On a regular, every year, no problems. Um, I don't see any problem with it myself, um, but that's, again, that's my personal view on it. And that's all I'll say.
Councilman Davis? Any question and comments? Oh.
Yeah, we don't want you running out.
And questions or comments?
Councilmember Davis, could you?
Bring it up to you.
How about now? We good?
It's good.
Alright. When I was downtown and uh. They had the sidewalk sale, then it became the Gold Rush, Gold Rush Days. They had a beer booth about. Twenty feet above my store. It was absolutely no problem whatsoever. And they uh, did a really nice job bringing in bales of hay and stuff and made it quite. You know, uh, western. So I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Council McCoy?
Um, I'm actually, to be honest with you, I um. Personally, I would, I'm not big on alcohol, but, and, and that's why I love the Tulley Lake Fair, because it is a dry fair. Um, and they do well, but I understand that it drives a lot of revenue now. Probably what I'm, would be more concerned with is making sure that we have a safe and sane gun battle if we have that there. After what happened in New Mexico, uh, no, no, no joke intended. I mean, I'm just, it's, there is always somebody who is supposed to be in charge of that, so. I would be um, okay with going forward with alcohol.
Okay. I will close the discussion and then I read the recommended city council action. And I will go to the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion, motion adopt um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh zero seven approving street closure and other request. For discover Siskiyou's special event known as Gold Rush Days twenty twenty-three and approve a supplemental appropriation of eleven thousand. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as the city cash and in-kind contribution to the event.
I have a motion from Councilman K. Somebody went over here, raised their hand.
Council McCoy, I'll second that motion.
And a second from Council McCoy. I'll go to um, parole call. Councilman K?
Hi.
Councilman Davis?
Hi.
Councilman Baker?
No.
Uh, Councilman McCoy? Hi, and I Middleton will be I. Motion passes? Number C, letter C, number C, always do that. You did it too and always corrected, yeah, and then I did the same thing. Okay, so fire chief, this is agenda title discussion to staff and city attorney for pose ordinance use and prohibit. Provisions of fire, use of fireworks within city limits. Staff seeking direction. From the city council of drafting a fireworks ordinance that would address the sale and use of fireworks. And use or ban of fireworks permitted events. Uh, petro, pyrotechnic shows and displays at the fire ground or casino. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, and I'll just give a brief update before Chief Lemos. Uh, comes down to engage the city council on this topic. So. On June twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one, the city of Wairika City Council adopted urgency ordinance number eight six four that delays the sale and use of fireworks. And public displays of pyrotechnics until the threat to public safety is abated. In the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, the calendar year of twenty twenty-two. The Wairika City Council requested a permanent ordinance be drafted and brought to city council for consideration. Unfortunately, we were never able to, to bring that to the city council. And a second request was made recently to review and discuss the direction of the legality of safe and sane fireworks in the city of Wairika. And before I bring Chief Lemos on, I just want to give my two cents as the city manager. Uh, the urgency ordinance went into place June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, and so ultimately, we've had. A couple seasons of uh, not allowing fireworks. And I believe when you stop allowing something such as fireworks, it takes multiple years until you gain compliance. Uh, and my understanding, Shasta County, they're not allowed. Uh, the city of Reading, safe and sane fireworks are also outlawed there. And uh, from my perspective as the city manager, I believe the correct direction on this particular topic. Would be to continue to move in that direction, create an ordinance that outlaws safe and sane fireworks. In the city of Wairika. Because ultimately, we have applied for a million-dollar grant with uh, Cal OES. To bring in a full-time employee that would be seeking funding to make us safe from fire. And it seems conflicting to me to, in the dead heat of ninety foot, ninety-five plus a hundred-degree temperatures. To allow fireworks and at the same time have the city running around trying to masticate private property with. Grant funding. Those two things seem to be in conflict for me personally, so I advocate to move forward. And draft an ordinance outlining safe and sane fireworks. And uh, with that, I'll leave you to Chief Lemos.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as Mr. Ledbetter had uh, put it earlier, we'd been talking about this for some time now. And I mean, when uh, Mr. Keg was the mayor, we had phone calls with him and Mr. Baker over the phone. Got uh, pretty interesting when in three thousand miles away trying to make a decision and you know what you have to do, but because the pressure's on, but. Anyhow, um, you know, this goes back many, many years with uh, fireworks. I mean, it's part of our heritage. It's a very. Um, uh, deeply held belief that that's what we do, you know, based on, on our traditions. Um, and in the city of Wairika, I can tell you, being on the fire department for twenty-eight plus years now, um, we have had some fires. They had potential. I'm not gonna lie to you there, um, and they were basically misuse of. Safe and sane fireworks from what we could gather. It's always kind of difficult because people kind of clam up when you try to find out what, you know, what actually happened. Um, but in the case of uh, anything with, that can be considered uh. Even safe and sane, but ones that, that are considered by uh, state of California to be dangerous fireworks. Um, those are the ones that can be um, ignited and then go off in the air. And the problem with those is we don't know where they're gonna land. Those are illegal regardless of, you know. Irregardless of what safe and sane fireworks, you know, what people do with those. They're illegal. You can't have them, you can't possess them, you can't use them. So there's already laws on the books for those under the fire code. So. From our standpoint with the fire department, we have had some issues. They haven't been so widespread that. You know, we've had issues like places have in other parts of the state. I can tell you, and speaking with um. Cal Fire Prevention Officers that deal with it all the time. Shasta County has, since they've banned it, uh, banned um, fireworks, they have seen a drastic decrease in their. Incidents, they, it's actually pretty quiet, according to a gentleman I spoke with. Um, which is kind of surprising because you, you would see, like, even what we had here on New Year's was, you know, pretty active. We had a lot of fireworks going off.
Yes, sure.
Are the, the illegal type, right? So my recommendation would be, um, based on what I've seen and what we've dealt with. It's only a matter of time before we do have a catastrophic event. Whether it's something involving um, a high-wind event and fireworks are, are utilized. You have to start somewhere, and as Jason uh, put it, you know, we've been, we've had them banned for a couple of years now. It's not to inhibit anybody's ability to go out and have a fundraiser, that's, that's unfortunate. However, no one here, I'm sure, would want to have uh, you know, see a major fire, you know, burn down part of the town. Um, and you have to take a stance on this, um, and that's kind of where I'm, I've thought about this really hard over the last. Couple of years, and what I want to caution you on is. If you do come up with an ordinance, if we do come up with an ordinance that is sound in all parts. You're more than likely still gonna see people shooting off illegal fireworks. That's just, I can almost guarantee it because. The nature of them is, you know, while I, you know how it is, more if, if you tell someone you can't do something, the more likely they want to, want to go and do it like a teenager would, right? It's, it's similar to that, for lack of a better description. So you're still gonna see that. So an ordinance that would ban. Sale and use of safe and sane fireworks, that's got its drawbacks too, right? Because people can't feel like they can't express themselves. And on the other end, there are gonna be people that are gonna shooting off the illegal fireworks, which, quite honestly, that's gonna take more work on our part and police department to. Um, have an enforcement component to it as well. And within the ordinance, hopefully, we can establish some um, fines and penalties that are. Gonna deter some of that activity. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Um, but I think it's, it's time to make a decision and not have this just as a consent agenda item and, you know. And, and go forward in that, in that regard, if that makes sense. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or.
Yeah, don't leave. We're gonna go to public comment first. Public comment for the chief or public comment, questions for the chief? Our questions to us, actually, then we can ask them, sorry. So questions to us for the chief.
Yeah, it's time to put an end to this fireworks thing. I don't want to be paradise and have our house part pity burned down. Because, you know, last year, I'm. We had to be evacuated. I have nowhere to go. And I don't want to do that again, you know, that was way too close for comfort. And it's way too hot and it's getting hotter and hotter and hotter. And, and we need to make. A ban against the mortar skills, people blowing off mortars every night, two weeks ago, you know? I mean, it's getting crazy. Um, so yeah, please support the ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any further, further questions, comments?
And just to clarify real quick on that, on uh, Don Marie's note.
Yes.
It is, and I know those do get called in. I'm sure Chief Gilman would, would uh. Go along with that, but if you see illegal activity, which those are, anything that shot into the air, those are illegal. Uh, we have had. We have had a structure fire in the past, not due to, to those, it was left, they were just hot fireworks left on the porch, but. My fear is that that's what we're gonna get. We're gonna get a structure fire related to. A mortar going off, because you don't know where they're gonna land. Someone leaves a. Pan of something in the yard, they were working on their car, whatever, and then it ignites that and then away we go. And nobody's there to catch it soon enough, and then we have, you know, we're spread out going to other calls. So anyway, make sure you call those in and, and, you know, we'll do the best we can to with police department to try to nip those in the bud. Those are, those are always illegal. Anything shot in the air, it's illegal, so report it, and we want to get that stopped. It's hard to catch them. You gotta catch them in the act, so. Anyway.
Thank you, chief, for the clarification. Something other further comment, a public comment, I'm gonna open up the council for questions to the chief. Any questions to the chief? Comment?
Yeah.
Comment, Mr. K? Councilman K, I'm sorry.
So in regards to what she, this was talking about a couple of years ago, we had to make that. That big judgment call of uh, right before the Fourth of July of canceling the fireworks, canceling all of that. Um, that was when I was mayor. It was a really tough one to make that call. I'll tell you what, we had, I had. Um, a lot of phone calls on both sides of that. A lot of people complaining that we canceled it. We had a lot of people. Um, saying, why didn't you cancel it sooner? So it was on both sides of it. The main thing we gotta look at here. Um, is if anybody wants to see the fireworks and stuff like that going on. It needs to be decided now, that's why we're bringing that forward now, because what transpires, you got all these special interest groups. That are selling fireworks and rely on that um, revenue coming in. So if you cut them off. Right at last minute, they lost their, their chances of making that revenue. So um, I'm not saying either way on that aspect, I'm just saying. That you gotta look at the special interest group. So if we get down to the wire, if we say right now as a council, we say it's okay. To have the fireworks and sell fireworks and all that stuff, and we get down to Fourth of July like we did two years ago. And cancel it last minute, and now all these people are stuck with their fireworks that they already purchased. The Elks, the, all these special interest groups that purchase these fireworks and now are stuck with them. And no way of making that back, so um, that's something we gotta keep in mind also on that, on their behalf. As, as uh, fire safety, first and foremost, we gotta look at that. I mean, we are, especially around that point in time. We are looking at higher fire danger, plain and simple. When we made that call that year, our humidity was down in the low teens. They had high winds and there was no questions asked. We had, we had to make that call for the safety of Wairika. Plain and simple. One spark would have totally devastated the whole city of Wairika guaranteed. So that was a tough one, but it was not a fun one that we wanted to make, but we, we made it. Um, but we gotta look at first and foremost the safety of our citizens and. Sa- safety of Wairika. And just like I said, we dodged a bullet last year with the McKinney fire coming up over the hill. We went and got the rainstorm, there would have been a good chance that. That would have came through, so. We're looking at different times, you know, growing up here, I've seen the fire danger, right, go up and down, up and down. And this last couple of years has been the highest fire danger I've ever seen in my fifty-five years here on this planet. So it's one of those things, we need to keep that in mind as a council before everybody makes their decision. We. Gotta look past what the past was and look to the future and the safety of our citizens. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. K.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, this is Jason Led.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is Jason Ledbetter. I just want to make a comment that the Assistant City Manager just kind of brought forth. And that is that I know that this is just fire that I'm talking about. This isn't fireworks, but ultimately just something to think about. The 2019 Camp Fire burned 19,000 structures and 11,000 of those were burned to the ground. To date, in 2023, only 1,400 of those have been rebuilt. And so I think that that's frightening.
I think it was sort of better, yes. Very frightening. Yeah, so I got like this. I can't see them with their hands are up. Okay, I got this. Any comments or questions, Councilman Davis?
Certainly. Chief Lemus, what do you mean by safe and sane? Is that a, is that a brand or is that a style?
It's a term used by state fire marshal. It's a legal term that there are safe insane fireworks that are sold. In fact, the the roadside retail sales that we've had in the past for Elks and for swim team and for everybody else that you've seen over the past, in the past, those all have to be, the individuals apply for, the groups apply for a permit through state fire marshal, and that's all they can sell legally. That's all they can sell is safe insane. And they have a stamp, a specific stamp on on the fireworks themselves, on the boxes that have to be displayed and they can't sell anything else. They can't sell anything that's ignited and shot into the air, you know, which are the illegal ones. They have to be, they're all ground and quote unquote, ground fireworks, including sparklers and those types of things. So the things that we've seen is since I was a kid growing up, they're they're the same kind of fireworks. But I can't tell you exactly when that went into effect, but it is, it is law. They have to be safe and sane. Anything else is illegal, even if they modify a safe insane firework to do something else, it's considered illegal, dangerous, illegal fireworks.
So explain to me just a little bit more, please, about the stuff that shot into the air.
Right.
We're not talking about like those little volcano type things that means that spark were going up.
No, no, I don't. As long as they're labeled as safe insane, there wouldn't be an issue. M80s, I don't know all the terms. Some of, some other people could probably enlighten me a little bit too because I've never, I never used them, thank God, or I wouldn't have any fingers because I was pretty much a terror when I was a kid, but.
For you?
Yeah, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, anything that shoots more than 10 feet tall is not a safe insane firework. And or anything that uncontrollably spins on the ground like, like you remember those things that in the old days, they would, the pinwheels that would.
The fun ones that I used to use.
Yeah, those are really good one, too. So I mean, I went, I tried going down the list of safe insane fireworks today and, you know, I stopped at page 30. And, you know, there's just so many of them and so many names that, you know, you don't have any idea what these things are. And like Chief Lemus said, the only way you know it's a safe insane firework is it's stamped safe insane. And people are given permits to sell safe insane ones. Whether they're any fun or not, I don't have any idea.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, thank you, Don.
Does that help, Mr. Davis?
I had another.
Sure.
So when we're talking about these fireworks, the display that the casino or the ones that we use to put Dawn down at the fairgrounds, those would be prohibited.
That's, that's up to the city council how you want to construct the ordinance. My recommendation would be if you're gonna take one thing away, having a pyrotechnic show that is permitted, if it's in the city and not on it's not, if it's on fairgrounds property, that's state property, state fire marshal has jurisdiction. We're just there to assist them. And then we we bring fire crews there to help suppress any fires that might start. Casino property, technically, they could tell us to go pound sand. They don't have to get a permit from us, but they have in the past because they want to, they want to be, you know, in in good stead with the community. So we participated with them. The one time, two times we had them out there. One time was in January, I think it was the year that we banned them. They went ahead and and got money and had them in January, which was, they both went fine. And then we had one actually on the fourth and that one went just great as well because we plan it, you clear out all any loose vegetation. And you make sure that the the zone that you construct and you have it on a map, everybody you have, you run it just like you would a regular fire incident with incident commander, you have safety, you have all the positions filled and it's it's really pretty flawless. It's not to say things can't go wrong. Not to say you can't have a rocket that goes, you know, off and starts a fire. But it's it's greatly reduced. So I would say that I would recommend that we you keep that as something that, you know, keep that in place to allow for pyrotechnics under a permit as appropriate for, you know, for the event. So. I think if you take one thing away, you still have people that would like to see those and have a show. They might say, okay, well, we won't do the, we won't chance it with the others, but we'll go watch the show. So that's just my own personal opinion, not based on anything, but my own, my own experience. So.
The last thing is that the safe insane fireworks would be in the front yard type of thing in front of your home.
Correct. Okay, that's generally how they're categorized, right? And that's why they're labeled as such and, you know, they're not going to hurt little kids and, you know, blow up in your face where, you know, that's, that's why they're they're labeled as such.
Thank you.
Councilman Baker, do you have any questions or comments?
I I do have a couple of questions. You know, I follow the rules. I follow the laws. And it seems like on the Fourth of July with my 11-year-old grandson, he doesn't understand why the neighbors are doing fireworks and we can't. So my concern is that if we do have an ordinance where we get rid of these safe insane fireworks, we make them illegal in the city of Warrick, what kind of enforcement is there going to be? I want to be, I, and I, I don't want it to just be, oh, we're gonna put a clause in the ordinance. I mean, I want to see enforcement.
I I agree with you. Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Baker. And I did want to just kind of briefly state that's what we're looking here for tonight is direction. We don't have a drafted ordinance at the moment. And so that is a great question. What type of enforcement other than just, yes, there's a fine. But having a broader discussion with, are we having more staff that evening specifically out there possibly in unmarked vehicles looking to? Seriously, I mean, I think what we learned today was that ultimately Shasta County pulls people over coming in from Tahama County that are purchasing and bringing them into the county. So I think that there has to be some very high level of enforcement and just for the rest of the city council. We are not voting on anything tonight. We are only looking for your feedback and kind of direction so we can draft something and have you guys take a look at a first draft.
So to answer that a little bit more directly, though, the normal fireworks ordinances would have a strong section on empowering city staff and law enforcement with the rights to seize any fireworks that they they find. And then there would be an administrative citation process where the officer could exercise discretion and whether or not to issue a citation. And then we would handle that in-house in the city to levy the fine. Plus, there can also be criminal penalties, but I don't think you're gonna find the district attorney enforcing those.
Just to clarify, Ms. Baker, are you talking about safe and sane? Or are you talking about the mortars that go off? Because I believe that somebody would have to correct me, but I believe that is like a penal code infraction, I would assume.
I can, I can get that for you. I don't have it with me currently. I believe.
I'm talking about the safe and sane. I mean, if that's the the way that we decide to go. And I guess I do have a question for our police chief, and that is are you going to have the personnel to be responding to illegal fireworks calls on the Fourth of July?
That's a good question. Like I said, tonight, we're not voting anything, but if we voted something in, then we'd have to discuss how we would staff it. I think Mr. Ledbetter, I did that pretty clear, that we'd have to come up with a plan. How much money do you want to spend on overtime? The illegal fireworks are already illegally. They are health and safety code violations. The safe and sane would be a city violation. Be similar to a dog ticket for a dog running a large. So how much enforcement do you want me to put out there for just for code violation? I think the safety risk gets high with fires. So I think it lends more to that. But that would be up to the city. And if you expected us to saturate the city, you'd have to pay for it.
So how are those calls? You get a a call New Year's Eve on mortars that are going off. How do you guys handle that call?
Just like any other call, we try to find out what's going on. Most of the time, honestly, we never find it. Someone calls us or we can see the mortar in the air somewhere up in the resies. By the time we get there, everyone's quiet. Everyone's outside and says they didn't see anything. We have to catch it. That's the honest answer.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Baker. Councilman Quinn.
So Chief Lemus, a couple of quick questions. If if you can pontificate on this. If if we are to, as we already have the fireworks that you buy out of state that go up in the air, those are already outlawed in the state.
That's correct.
If we were to have an ordinance that prohibited the sale of safe insane and the shooting and the usage of safe insane fireworks, will that make less calls for you on a, will you have less calls on a on a July 4th weekend?
Possibly, possibly a few, a few or less calls. We have had calls for trees and bushes and things catching fire when people were misusing. You know, that's kind of the key, right? You can do it safely. You can have a bucket, you know, water there to put them in. People follow the the directions and and use their common sense. I mean, they're not a problem. But to answer your question, yeah, I mean, in in directly, yeah, it would, it would reduce our calls.
Okay.
We don't have a ton. We don't, we, you know, but then that could all change, you know, with the, you know, with the with the way the wind blows, literally. I mean, it could be something that simple. So or a different type of firework that's for a YouTube video where they see how to modify one of those or watch what this does. And then I don't mean to be sound flippant, but that's happened in the past, too.
Is July 4th, either the weekend or during the week, is it a critical time for Warrick firefighters? Do you, are you on more of an alert?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And why is that, that you're on more of an alert? I'm just curious.
Because of fireworks. I mean, and anymore, it's because we have, we have fires during that time of the year. The humidity is low. The winds generally are the primary cause of fire spreading quickly in, you know, vegetation. So, yeah, we're already on high alert. It's fire season has grown. It was no longer June, July and August. It's April through November, literally.
But so would you be on higher alert, though, on July 4th weekend than you would be in the rest of June, July and August? Or is it not? Is it no, no different?
We'd be on higher alert just because of the risk of fireworks.
And 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 the and the worry for you as a chief, because you have a volunteer fire department, not the numbers, but the worry for you and what what's your worst fear on on your life fourth weekend with fireworks going off and it's very, very dry? I'm just curious. What would be your your worst fear for your department?
Worst fear would be winds that could start in a location in town and spread through residential area and start putting lives in danger, you know, things that are on the periphery that, you know, where it goes. It's a concern for us to stop anything at all, but it's it's also a concern if it gets into the state responsibility area too, because we have a, you know, mutual agreeing, not agreement, but understanding that the Cal Fire comes and helps us in in town when we need it. And we also want to help prevent anything from going into the SRA, just like we had discussed that with their unit chief and and other officers on the encampment, you know, on campus way. We don't want to let those campfires get out of hand to where they go up and get up on top of the Green Horn and create a huge problem for the state. So. But yeah, my worst fear would be having a wind driven event started by misuse of fireworks.
Ultimately, loss of life.
Absolutely, loss of life and not having enough firefighters to, you know, to handle it. And generally, we we have enough help nearby, but everyone's busy because each of their jurisdictions has stuff going on that time of year.
My concern as a councilman or a councilperson is that I would, I would prefer not to be responsible for a fire that takes somebody's life or that takes somebody's home. That would be, you know, that would, that for me would show that I probably was grossly negligent. When you talk about safe and sane, I sold safe and sane for 19 years for the VFW. I was part of the American Legion Drum and Bible Corps here in Warrick. And I know that in a good year, we could make $2,500 to $3,000 in a good year. Some years we only made $1,500 to $1,900. All of our money went back into the two local school bands. I think all but maybe $500 did every year, and it was a good moneymaker. And that's why when Councilman Keg points out that the year that we finally took this short-term fix, it was done way, way late. It had, we had pushed for it earlier, but for some reason or another, it got pushed back three or four or five meetings. Growing up, you know, I I miss, I I miss the things. We always, growing up on the border, we smuggled ball rockets, cherry bombs, M80s and firecrackers into California. They were all illegal in California. And if you got caught smuggling in as a kid, you got just, you just got thrown into jail with the regular adults in Mexicali. But we were never allowed, the reason we did that, so my dad was strict and he didn't allow, because we were from, we had 250 acres of cotton and other things around us. And if we burned out my dad's fields, he was not going to be happy. So and any of these are, I mean, I'm going to speak to what Councilman Ledbetter said, hey, we elevated you. What city manager Ledbetter said is that, and what you were talking about is that any of these, even the safe insane can be dangerous. And you see people looking eyes or whatever to them. And and we can't mitigate that. People are going to do stupid stuff. That's just the way the earth, the way the world is. But as far as the professionals, you know, two years ago, New York City had, my daughter's been there seven years now, they had a barge blow up. Luckily, most of theirs are on barges in the middle of the of the Hudson in the middle of the East River. Only a few things are in neighborhoods in Staten Island, Brooklyn and and the Bronx, but they had a whole barge blow up. And so so even those with, like you're saying, that we're doing up at the with the tribe we're doing can get dangerous. So I would just not want, in conclusion, I would not want to put Warrick in the same places either Paradise or Talent, Phoenix and Ashland. You know, I just, I wouldn't want to try and court, you know, tempt fate. So that that would be, I'd want to keep it fairly. I'd want to keep it safe. And and I think that the only way to do it, if you're going to do it, is to ban it all. And I love fireworks. Don't get me wrong. I love them.
Thank you, President McCoy. And that's more I could really say, just, you know, as a kid, I remember being excited to, you know, have the fireworks fans around when I was a little kid. But as Councilman Keg said, the fire seasons have been way worse the last five, six, seven years, not like we used to have. You know, as a kid, I never remember the fires, but never been evacuated from my home or, you know, just the weather, climate has changed. And this is a whole different ballgame out there with the fire seasons as the chief addressed. So one thing, you know, we could do ordinances as we all talked ordinances all day long and put things on the books. But the key to have a successful ordinance of anything, whether it be fireworks or what have you, building, you know, whatever, is the enforcement, as we have to be serious about it, is if we do direct them to have an ordinance, we do have to work with the police and the fire chief to make direct them to have an ordinance, we do have to work with the police and the fire chief to make sure that we take it serious, that we're giving the fines out there and that they know that we're not playing anymore, that it's just not a joke. You know, that, oh, Elvis can light them off, we won't get caught or nothing's going to happen to us, is, you know, they do to be fined and the other motors orders are scary, too. I I'll tell chief where the repeat offender is offline, but I know where one's at that rattles my house every so often. It's as bad, as scares my dogs, scares me. And it's like every, every celebratory occasion that they're setting them off, you know, so it's very dangerous, very scary. I can't imagine being right next door because it's a few blocks away and it rattles my house when they set them off. And it's very scary for my dogs and for everybody. I mean, so, you know, um, I think a lot of the, you know, and I may be speaking for them. I make an assumption here, but I think a lot of the organizations are recognize that we have moved away from, are moving away from the cells of the fireworks and they're going in a different direction for fundraising. They have drive through dinners. They're, see, they also doing different fundraising, you know, because they've lost out on three years now. I think it's been three years, right, that we haven't had them?
This would be the third.
Third year, yeah, third year. One, you know, we tagged the day or day before they already had them set up. And I think, you know, it crushed everybody within the city and the chief had to go down, put the red tag. I believe, were you in town or out of town that time? We had to red tag the stands.
I was in town, but they were already pretty much doing it on their own.
Yeah, and you know, but
Talk to one.
Yeah, but you know, it's still hard for us to go tell those organizations that, you know, hey, wrap it up, you know, and we can't allow this, you know, but they understood, but it's still crushing for them to, you know, try to get some money back or return it, but I know Butte County has been, they've been a dry community as well for years and years and years and years. So it's just not our county, but I think just like I said, the enforcement, if we do move towards this, the enforcement still is key is knowing we're serious about the laws and serious about the ordinance we place on the books. And so I will close with that and thank you for your time. Chief and Guess we'll get a consensus of the council. We're going to give direction to says, uh, Merciful City Action says, provide directions to City Attorney on draft drafting fireworks and regulated special event ordinance.
Yeah, I think we need to ask the council with their direction. The my direction is, yes, to act up an ordinance for moving forward with this restriction of fireworks and stuff, so just like we have on there.
Okay, so we have Mr. Keg's, uh, Councilman Keg, um, expressing to move forward on the ordinance for the fireworks for drafting.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to restate that. This is the city manager, I guess, just kind of having a better understanding of the council is interested in an ordinance that would outlaw fireworks. And I think that was what Mr. Keg is saying. And ultimately, from there, providing any other direction, if that is in fact what the council is directing any other direction for the city attorney, so we can draft something and come back at a future date.
Okay.
If I'd like to give direction to the city attorney to have it back to us for April Fourth meeting.
Is is your microphone on, Paul?
No, it's not.
No, I just said I'd like to see it no later than the April Fourth meeting for a vote.
I don't want to carry it on into May and June. I think, you know, it'd be even better if we could see it by March twenty first.
Okay, well, just remember, I'm recovering from surgery. I'm not really, um, working at full pace here.
Okay, well, that that may, that could be something we can discuss at, you know, off mic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have consensus to move forward with as soon as possible, sounds like for direction for the attorney to draw the ordinance from two council members.
In the meantime, if you keep
Sorry, don't.
Meantime.
Hold on.
In the meantime, if you keep passing the interim ordinance, nobody's deceived that, um, fireworks are going to be, um, coming out of the bag pretty quick.
Yeah, we already, we already approved the consent agenda for the temporary, yeah. Mr. Davis.
Um, I I'd like to see Dawn move towards the use of safe and sane fireworks on years that are not as dry as they have been in the last two years. It's been really dark and dry. Um, the campfire was not started by fireworks and neither was the McKinney fire. They were not started by fireworks. And if we are, um, using safe and same ones in front of our house on the street with a garden hose close by, most of the time there's a fire, does not have an issue. Um, and then Mr. Lemus and his elite crew is right there if they need it.
So you're not advocating for the ordinance?
I'm not for banning fireworks whatsoever.
Okay, so that's not for the ordinance. Okay, so, Mr. Councilmaker, you you said move forward, correct?
Um, I'm actually, um, for an ordinance banning, um, the fireworks, I would like to see in it, um, to be able to, um, issue, um, licenses or whatever for special events or the professional shows.
Okay, yes, correct. Repeat what you said, will you repeat what you said for Mr. Davis?
Um, I would like to, um, see a provision, um, for licensing for special shows by licensed pyrotechnicians.
The overhead shows. And I would agree with, um, Councilman Baker as well. Before the ban on the ordinance, but ask for, you know, special, the shows were permitted and, um, required guidelines, whatever that may be. So so I think you have direction from four out of five council members to go ahead and move forward.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
I just want to clarify that I'm not writing up the use of safe and sane fireworks on the, um, on the wetter summers.
Um, I think you're going to get back to Mr. Ledbetter, we can write what we said. I think it's just a full ban besides the special events.
Yeah, the direction at the moment was, uh, essentially for council members would like to see an ordinance drafted uh, banning safe and sane and also licensing for special events with the I wrote the certified pyrotechnics.
Yep, that's what I got. I was typing.
Okay, thank you. All right, D, so this is Public Works Agenda Title, Award Professional Services Agreement with Remedy Engineering for Qualified Environmental Professional QEP Services for the Environmental Cleanup of the South Foothill Drive Brownsville Site. The city issued a request for proposals on November thirtieth, twenty twenty two for a qualified environmental professional for the site cleanup and has received one submission pursuant to its QEP solicitation. After staff review, it was determined that the consultant remedy engineering is qualified. The company and project engineers are appropriately registered and licensed, and the proposal meets the city needs. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Wairega City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. Uh, so I just want to clarify on this item, but the action on this item is very specific to voting on the approval of the remedy engineering contract. And so some background here for some of the newer council members in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one before my tenure. The city of Wairega decided to purchase the property at four hundred South Foothill Drive. The intent at the time of purchase was to transition the parcel into an urban campground to help alleviate the unhoused issue within the city of Wairega. Unfortunately, it was determined that the parcel had hazardous waste on the property and that would need to be abated prior to any development. All of this was happening during the transition of retirement and new employees at the city of Wairega. Once the city completed its transition into the current department head and city hall management staff, the planning director was able to find a grant opportunity via the Department of Toxic Substances Control, DTSC. And the city of Wairega was awarded a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollar grant in October of twenty twenty two in order to abate this property. The first step in cleaning up the soil on this site is to assess the site and create a work plan which GeoCon, uh, had done prior to this contract coming forward today. This contract with remedy is for roughly forty eight thousand, so forty seven thousand, four hundred and forty seven dollars to manage that GeoCon work plan, help put together the technical documents for a contractor to clean up the site, manage the mandated reporting and keep the city compliant for this project. The soil removal work will be a separate contract that will also be paid by the DTSC grant. So this is just hiring the qualified environmental professional that helps us get the contractor and ultimately is required to oversee soil abatement. So regardless of the direction concerning an urban campground, the city of Wairega owns this property at four hundred South Foothill Drive that has known contaminants on site and requires the local agency to actively abate that issue. That said, the recommended action tonight is a motion from the city of Wairega City Council authorizing the city manager and staff to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with remedy engineering for the environmental cleanup of the South Foothill Drive Brownfield Site. Separately, after you guys engage that topic, I would like to continue the conversation because we've had interest from council members to bring this item back and have a broader discussion about the urban campground. And so I need the city council to advise direction for what the future of the foothill site should be as we get closer to a grant application for a home key project that would serve a similar purpose as an urban campground. I advise that the city council direct me to engage this, this particular topic of an urban campground with Dr. Sarah Collard of the County of Siskiyou and explore the best use of this site and match funding availability to a possible project that benefits the unhoused community. And I would suggest that we do that at the COC meeting with Councilmember Keg, who's the chair of the Continuum of Care and Councilmember McCoy or Pro Tim McCoy, who also attends those meetings. So we can have a conversation offline, develop a plan, bring it back to the city council to determine if that's something that the city council would like to move forward on. But I just want to make it clear that we're separating these two items. The urban campground is a separate conversation. We have a contaminated site that we own and we know we need to clean it up. And that's pretty much today, all that we're here to discuss. So I hope that's as convoluted as it sounded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Led, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Yeah. Okay, open up for a public comment regarding the four hundred South Foothill Drive property. Thank you, Don Murray. Any other further comments? Public. Okay, I'll close public comment and go to city council for public comment.
Public comment?
I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman comments, I'm sorry.
On that, obviously, these are two different, two separate issues. Uh, when you own the property, would you need to go cleaned up, no matter what? Uh, we future discussions, actually, the Martin versus Boise has nothing to do with the location of that. I've studied the law on that one, so I do know that very well. I read that very closely. So, um, if you want to go, if anybody wants to talk about Martin versus Boise court case, I'll be more than happy to talk to him about the whole court case because I've studied it a lot. And I'm sure Don, our city attorney, has, uh, went over this court case very much, uh, very thoroughly also. Uh, but anyways, um, this will be future discussions because we cannot continue, um, doing what we're doing with the campsite that we have. The current location is not proper, but that's our discussion tonight. Our discussion tonight is in front of us is just to whether or not we want to move forward on getting this property cleaned up, basically. So that's, um, all I'm going to have to say that because we need to get it done. As a city, it's our responsibility of our property to get it cleaned up. And then we'll have that future discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman K. Any comments, questions, Councilman Davis?
Does a, uh, urban campground have to be for the homeless?
So that's, I mean, that's kind of a weird question to ask.
Are you, are you asking, are you asking first? Are you directing the question to Mr. Ledbetter?
I I'm
I don't know, I don't know the question, so you'd have to ask Mr. Ledbetter, probably.
I'll ask Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Davis, that's a great question because we are in an area of great recreation tourism, and I am not aware of an active campground within the city limits, um, for, uh, just general camping. But generally, the verbiage of an urban campground, the way that we're discussing it here this evening is, um, definitely based around the unhoused populations, absolutely.
The unhoused population, thank you.
A little bit more history. Actually, the city yard was actually designated as the only campground back in the, I think, sixties, um, because I did research that. And Upper Green Horn Park actually was developed originally, um, with campgrounds up in that.
Let's just make sure we raise our hands and come to, uh, this weekend turn, please. I've got too many conversations going. Thank you. Councilman Baker, any questions or comments for Mr. regarding the four hundred South Hill property?
So how long has the city owned this property, Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah, I would have to defer to the three council members and possibly Mr. McCoy. It predates my tenure here. So definitely prior to January of twenty twenty two. Um, Ms. Hogan, are you familiar?
I know it's purchased prior to me being elected.
August of twenty twenty, August, September. Is that your right selection, Councilmember?
Three years.
August of twenty twenty is what it sounds like, Ms. Baker.
So the question that I have, because I, um, am new to the council is, um, when the property was purchased, wasn't there any kind of like environmental assessment or, um, concerns about contamination brought up at that time? And I know this is just a rhetorical question, but why did we even buy it? Um, and I understand that now that we own it, we're responsible for cleaning it up.
Absolutely. And I think I would defer to the three council members and possibly the city attorney and and the assistant city manager. Because I, I'm having not been here, I'm not really um, can, I can only draw inferences and my inferences, I think, would kind of, as I look back and having worked in government now six or seven years, primarily, I was with the county of Siskiyou at the time that this purchase was made. My assumption would be that the city was overwhelmed with the homeless issue and ultimately grasping at any possibility to rectify it. And I think that the impetus for this purchase came from Rogue Rogue Retreat, I believe, was doing something very similar in Southern Oregon, and it seemed to be working. And I think that model was wanting Was wanting to be replicated here. Whether or not um. That's just my, that's my thought, so.
So when we buy property from now on, can we make sure that we don't enter into this kind of uh. Situation again?
Absolutely, and we do take those um. Take those precautions.
Thank you.
Real quick, and I, just to clarify, I was not on the council when this property was purchased. It was purchased prior to me um. Being elected, but from what I understand, being in the business is that that property was. In the middle of a transaction with a current a agent and they're going to sell the property. And that they were going to require. All the hookup fees and. It was gonna be. Outrageous. And so the buyer backed out, seller was desperate. I think, I don't know who approached the city or who bought the property, but from my understanding is, because I wasn't sitting here, is that that was a step missed. To test the soil and buy that property without having any. And that was a big, big oopsie in my opinion, that it was bought not having any of those. Especially being next to the junkyard and wrecking yard with oil and contamination, but. Yeah, that's some. Any buyer. Rather be a city, but the city should have, at that time. Tested the property, but I wasn't here for that, so.
Thank you.
That's what I heard, what I've heard. Councilmen are protipic way.
Yeah, if you would let me address this, um, I worked with the council and with Mr. Baker on this. Um, it was done, we looked at several parcels. Um, it was done with um great forethought. Um, matter of fact, um, we, uh, Mr. Baker had. Plans, uh, we all traveled up at, at once or twice or maybe three times. To visit with Chad McCombs and to see what they had going on in the Rogue Valley, because they have, they had and still do have a very successful. Homeless encampment. Palate shelter. Regular warming shelter as well as small housing. Was that tiny, tiny homes, tiny homes. Um, when the. Um. The property was purchased, and I know that uh the mayor knows this as well, when the property was purchased. Um, there was the thought perhaps, not because of the wrecking yard, but because you've got a. A, 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 a used motor oil. Uh, diesel. Um. Train that sat next door to it for thirty six years old, number nineteen. He, it, it went down to Mexico for a while, it came up, but it was when it was in the Pancho Villa, came up here, then it went over and did. It's done a couple other movies, but it basically sat here for most of the time and. When um GeoCon did their study, I was out there both days when they were running their ground penetrating radar and their. Worry was not necessarily that the pollutants had come from there, but their worry was that the pollutants had probably come from the other side. Now. Um, if you buy a home. In Wayrica, one of the things you want to be careful about is you have a lot of diesel furnaces. Here in Wayrica and a lot of the older homes have the diesel tanks buried in the ground. Matter of fact, my wife still kills, uh, shoots me because I wouldn't buy one about twenty years ago. So I would say that any property. Well, I'll get to it. I would say that any property you're gonna buy in Wayrica, if it's over fifty years old, you want to make sure that. You probably want to go and and go ahead and spend the ten thousand dollars or whatever to test. Um, in this one, we did not because we somewhat assume that it's probably going to have some sort of an issue. Um, if we chose to, and we've talked about this as a council, if we chose to asphalt it over. Problem's gone. Spend thirty, forty thousand dollars on asphalt and it's gone. We don't have to worry about it. But again, we don't think that people want to sleep on asphalt. I mean, maybe. Maybe it would be better to sleep on asphalt than to sleep on dirt. I don't know. So um, it was built, it was purchased because the price was. Very good. It was purchased because um. It was in a location at the time that we discussed with both YPD and fire or fire uh medical. In order to uh and they felt that it was um a great place to respond. Also, at the time, it was felt that because of its proximity to Beacon of Hope, which is right next door, built on the same land part of that. Part of that um whole lot. Those are actually two very oddly shaped lots. Um, that, that the railroad used long before it was ever a. Uh. An auto record. When I moved here in eighty six, it was an auto record, but it, but it was a loading area for um. The cars. Um, so. We thought at the time, and correct me if I miss, if I say something that I maybe, but we thought at the time that having it close to the um. The Beacon of Hope was also a good thing because we also thought, one of the things we had talked about is that if we could get it up and running. That perhaps Beacon of Hope would then take it, you know, would, would then be able to take it over. So um. It's, it's been a, a, a long journey for me personally as a councilman, a disappointing journey. Uh, I'm not, I'm not picking on uh this current uh city manager, but we had a, we've had a lot of turnover in the first uh. In this, in the second, in the, in the second, third and fourth year that I've been on this council, a lot of turnover and a lot of things kind of just. Went by the wayside. They just, and, and, and so I am glad to see that we're going to get the property um. That we're going to get the property cleaned up. You know, um, the one thing we also have to remember is that we have entered into negotiations as a council in a city. With other people that we sold property to and we have said, nope, we're not cleaning it up. Nope, we're not testing it. You take it as is. And so.
You're the sellers.
What's that? Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we have, you know, we, yeah, maybe if we're going to be consistent, then we need to put out the money every time we sell a piece of.
We're the sellers, although the buyers usually do the inspection.
Well, but they asked us, they asked us to do the inspection.
But we're the sellers.
But the buyer asked us to do the inspection and we did not, we refused. So. You're shaking your head, question or?
Most of the time when you buy. Property like that, there's an environmental study up or they have to. Proclaim the fact that there is diesel in the ground or asbestos in the building. They, I did not, that has to be on the. Documents when you sign them, that there's a.
Yeah.
Environmental hazard there. Oh, that's kind of.
My, our assumption was, yeah, our assumption was we probably run into something there. We just didn't know what.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the thing is, if we, if we choose to asphalt it over, we're done. All you gotta do is cap it. So what's that? Yeah, no, that's all you gotta do is cap it. Yeah, and then we have nobody left in the county that hauls uh that does environmental. And then the second thing, the other thing we ran into is that it all has to be. Hauled south of Stockton now. There's no place in Anderson to haul it. So I mean, what we're, what, what I think, again, going back to what the document's talking about is we're looking at mitigating this. It was also a good way to use the Brownfields grant. For one thing. Um, when government looks at the EDC, who's monitoring the Brownsfield grant, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. They're, they're monitoring the EPA Brownfields and then we did a separate grant to get the DTSC one.
Yeah. And so what happens though is it also shows. State and federal government that we are trying to do our part to clean up. Um, sites that have been contaminated, you know. But like I said, I know when I looked at a house. Uh, on uh Oregon at one point in time. Twenty eight years ago, they were telling me thirty, forty thousand dollars to pull the diesel tank out of the backyard. And to clean it up. And I said, I'm not, I'm not spending that. And so we backed out of the sale. So. Anyway, yeah, it's um, it's unfortunate that we have to do it, but you know. We do have to do it. And it was just purchased three years ago, I believe. Well, I don't think it was anymore than three years ago.
Any other further questions? Or comments? Okay, then I will. So the recommend city council action is the motion to authorize city manager and staff to negotiate. Enter into a professional service agreement with remedy engineering. For qualified and environmental professional QVP for services. Uh, for the environmental cleanup on South Foothill Drive Brownfield site. What are the wishes of the council?
Councilman McCoy, so moved.
I have a motion from pro Tim McCoy. Have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second from uh Councilman K. I will go for roll call. Councilman K.
I.
Councilman Davis.
I.
Councilman Baker.
I.
I will be uh, Councilman McCoy, I'm sorry.
I.
And I will be, I. Thank you. Okay. One step.
Yep.
You want me to go to seven, right? Or are we discussing the second step of? We're not discussing the other part, right?
Actually.
Foothill Drive?
Yeah, if it pleases the council, what I would, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, what I would like to do is uh. Move that conversation with Mr. Keg and Mr. McCoy. To the COC meeting with Dr. Sarah Kallard devise a strategy and bring it back to the council and see what they have to say.
Okay, great. All right, so new business city manager, the title, the formation of. A communications ad hoc committee.
Yeah, this is, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, Wayrica City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, and I actually, real quick. Want to address the handful of people in the audience tonight. And let them know that um our heater is obviously broke. Okay.
Piece of meat in here.
And uh.
It's sixty degrees.
Well, and we just keep sucking cold air in and it won't turn off. And ultimately, um, we had this similar issue happen um right before.
Warning center.
Yes, yep, right, right before uh Mr. Davis and Ms. Baker came on. So we will rectify it, but it will not happen this evening. So I just let everyone know, you're not going crazy. It's freezing in here, so. Ultimately, all right, so with that. Uh, thank you. So this is for the formation of a communication ad hoc committee. So with the loss of the local radio station and obviously the local newspaper can really transition into a weekly and primarily online paper. An evaluation of public communication and outreach has become necessary. Although the city currently utilizes social media, the city website, regularly scheduled city council meetings. The utility bill newsletter and community workshops, we recognize the opportunity to streamline these efforts. And the formation of this ad hoc will help integrate the community into guiding the possible changes. In the pursuit of better communication with the public. Staff recommends a motion to adopt resolution two zero two three dash zero eight. Of the city council, the city of Wayrica. Creating an ad hoc committee focused on improving citywide communications. With the change to section seven meetings, line three. Will remove the reference to the fire department ad hoc committee and will be replaced with the communications ad hoc committee. That makes sense to anybody. If you'll notice that you had a new draft put out here. Uh, before the meeting, but within the packet, anybody following along, there is um a reference to the fire department ad hoc. That will be replaced with the communications ad hoc committee. Uh, and we will also. Ask of the city council to appoint two city council members to serve on the ad hoc and if uh recollection. Uh, my recollection is correct. I know that we have council member Baker adamantly, I think. Had volunteered herself to sit on this um. Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. I'll open up to public comment. Regarding the formation of communications of an ad hoc committee. Any public comment? No public comment? Okay, I will close. Public comment and go to council members. Ready? Any questions or comments? Okay. So I guess um. Before the approval, do we want to? Select the two people who would want to be on it or? Want to prove it first and select the two people.
I believe.
Good.
I believe either way would be just fine, but I, I would advocate that you choose two people and then make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to. Advocate for. Uh, Councilman Baker.
You're willing to sit? So yes, okay, Councilman Baker will sit on that committee. I guess I will sit. I don't have, nobody else wants to. I don't sit on anything else, so. I know everybody else is pretty busy. Is that okay? Okay, you want to be a fill-in? Okay, so we have um Councilman Baker and then Mayor Middleton will sit on the committee and um. Councilman Davis will be a um. His own alternate, yeah, great. Okay, so the. Motion to adopt resolution twenty three dash O A city council of the city where we could creating ad hoc committee focused on improving citywide communications. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Baker. Makes the motion. Have a second?
I'll second it, Councilman McCoy.
Pro Tim McCoy, second, I will go to roll call. Councilman Cake.
I.
Councilman Davis.
I.
Councilman Baker.
I.
Pro Tim McCoy, I, and I will be I. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, um. B, this is informational update on video conferencing of the Brown Act meetings of city council and city boards, commissions and committees. Can read this. On September thirteenth, twenty twenty two, Governor Newsom signed into law Assembly Bill AB two four four nine. Rubio, which became effective on January first, twenty twenty three. The bill further admits the Brown Act regarding remote teleconference participating in meetings of legislative bodies, bodies. Are subject to the Brown Act by allowing individual members of legislative bodies increase flexibility to participate in meetings via teleconference. In the event of a personal. Emergency without declared state emergency provided a certain require, provided that certain requirements are met. AB three sixty one was initially. Scheduled to remain available to legislative bodies until January first, twenty twenty four. However. The governor's office has indicated the attempt to lift the state emergency he proclaimed regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic. On February twenty, twenty twenty three, which will impact all legislative bodies' ability to conduct ritual meetings under the provisions of AB three sixty one. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Wayrica City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. Uh, so it is anticipated that the governor will lift the proclaimed emergence, uh, state of emergency regarding the COVID pandemic on two twenty eight, twenty twenty three. Since the law that allows deviation from the Brown Act for teleconference meetings will no longer apply. The governor signed into law AB twenty four forty nine, which became effective one, one of twenty three. On page eighty five of your agenda packets, you will see a great summary. And differences between the original Brown Act and the AB two four four nine alternatives. City staff is advocating to adopt the teleconference opt-in form. At the next city council meeting or one in the near future. The version in your packets was put together by homogenizing. What many other local agencies have done and staff will amend the version to be voted on. Uh, if we do move forward on the three, seven, twenty three meeting. To get rid of the email address on page eighty eight and replace it with the city of Wayrica email address. I think that was also left. Uh, as a side note there at the table when you came in today. So there's a slight difference in your agenda packet. Uh, we're not voting on this item tonight, uh, but are presenting this draft. As we plan on having it for vote at a future meeting. So essentially what is happening is that your ability. To not be here, but still participate. In the meeting is changing ultimately. During COVID, during the emergency, it was Zoom and this change to the Brown Act alleviated. The requirements for city councils to actually meet in person. I don't think that that really played a huge role here for the city of Wayrica and I don't envision. Uh, a huge requirement for teleconferencing in the future, but ultimately we do want to remain flexible. And so we have the opt-in form at the end that you're not voting on, but we would like to hear from you tonight. And ultimately bring it back as our, essentially our policy to engage. If somebody has a family emergency and needs to leave the state, but ultimately still wants to participate in a very important meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. So that's just. Do we take any action?
There's no action. Let's see. Yeah, just comment.
Public comment? Running AB two four four nine.
Yeah, and you'll notice on page eighty-eight of this, of the, uh, agenda packet, teleconferencing opt-in form.
Lorenzo?
May I answer that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, that'll have absolutely no effect, uh, to my understanding. You will still be able to give public comment. You will still be able to watch the meetings via Zoom.
Thank you. The other public comment? Okay, I will close public comment. Council members, any public comment or questions?
I'm gonna, we need to be able to be, uh, council that participates no matter what. So we want to be able to participate whether we're out on, uh, vacation or visiting loved one or, um, whatever the circumstance may be, then we need to be able to be proactive as a council. So this is just another way of doing that. And if any of you that still are on any other committees, um, I know any of my homeless committees that I serve on, you pretty much have to do it via teleconference of some sort. I can't, there's no other way. I'm not driving down to Reading or Sacramento or anything else to participate in some of these meetings. So this is a necessity to be able to continue.
Correct. All right. All right.
All right, thank you. We will, we will bring back the opt-in for you to vote on at a future meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lebeder. Yeah, so city manager staff reports, city manager staff with a brief announcements, reports at this time, please chief, uh, looks like please che- chief Mark Gilman will present statistics on vehicular traffic within the city. So Mr. Lebeder first?
Okay, I will just real quickly before Chief Gilman comes up. Uh, we are in talks right now. Looks very promising for a warming center at the Methodist Church on Thursday and Friday of this week, the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth. Uh, we're still finalizing staffing and, uh, Chief Gilman's working on the YPD side of staffing as well. Uh, met with the Red Scarf Society on two sixteen with Public Works to update them on the theater HVAC and roof. Uh, met with some, some of the downtown merchants and the EDC on two sixteen to s- to discuss business improvement districts, the Chamber of Commerce and possibly a Main Street organization. Uh, I attended the city manager conference in Carlsbad the week of two six and the two major takeaways from, uh, that seminar were first and foremost, there's another very similar, uh, I guess from Cal Cities and misleading item that actually did make the ballot and it's called, it's an acronym called CBRT, California Business Roundtable. It's qualified for the November twenty twenty-four ballot. Cal Cities is adamantly, uh, opposing this item and Cal Cities, you know, for, for the city council, I believe you're all aware, but that's essentially that locally, we call that LOLA when we get together. Cal Cities is, uh, California League of Cities. So um, they are adamantly against this and they're requesting resolutions from the city. Uh, and I will, we will bring one of those forward at a future meeting. The fiscal impacts are two billion dollars of annual tax revenue is at risk. It could lead to cuts in emergency response, law enforcement, public health, parks, libraries, mental health services and more. The measure is misleading as it changes the constitution to make it more difficult for local voters to pass measures needed to fund local services and projects. It would also retroactively cancel measures that were passed by local voters. And it would prohibit local advisory measures where voters provide direction to politicians on how they want their local tax dollars spent. So staff will be bringing a resolution to a fu- a future meeting to support Cal Cities and it'll be up to the city council if they want to approve that resolution. And then secondly, the other big topic that was discussed, um, were public meetings and managing disruptions. And so the city manager from Los Gatos was there and some incidents that occurred during COVID, uh, brought us as Senate Bill eleven hundred, which went into effect in twenty twenty-two. Um, and it touches on this subject during basically disruptions during city council meetings or public meetings. And so I think that the Wayrica City Council, um, also has a code of conduct document from two thousand and two that each city council member was given an orientation that has policies and procedures and can use updating and discussion to empower the council. And so I am advocating that we schedule a workshop outside of the city council meeting. Uh, it would be open to the public, uh, but it would not interfere when we're doing the business of the city, but a workshop to go over both of these documents and discuss changes the council may like to see in the code of conduct. Uh, we can then bring back the altered document for adoption at a future meeting. And so I guess I do have a question for you. Does that sound appropriate? And if so, within the next six weeks, is there a day and time that generally works for people? And, uh, I hate to point out one council member, but I'm going to this gentleman right here, the busiest of all council members, Mr. K.
I don't, yeah, long as I know advance.
Okay, so I can, um, touch base.
See, I'm sorry, Council Baker has, um, some conflicts during the day as well. So.
Okay.
With, child, her granddaughter.
So I can touch base with you guys individually, uh, get something set up and then obviously it will be publicly noticed. Um, and we'll start, we'll start from there. So.
Okay.
And then finally, um, we have a lot of exciting things coming. And so in March, staff will be, be bringing forward the housing inventory assessment from Housing Tools. This document will provide guidance for the city council on possible housing sites for the city uh, to explore and team up with a developer as well as the best sites for the home key grant application. So you can expect that March twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebeder. Yeah, it's definitely, we'll need to get together at that workshop. It's nineteen years old, so twenty years old. Chief Gilman.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Gilman. So city manager contacted me to ask me to present some statistics on traffic in Wayrica. Uh, a lot of people always complain their streets, the busiest street in Wayrica, and they have the worst speeders and the worst traffic. So I went through, we had two hundred and fifty-six traffic complaints in twelve months from January to January. Those were, someone called us in that they had an actual traffic. I graphed them out. We have a mapping software that's fairly reliable. And I graphed them out and I only found, I think there was four that were in the upper resies for speeding cars and running stop signs, things like that. Most of them were on Main Street, Oregon Street, the main drags. We're typically going to get your complaints anyways. We had a hundred and five accidents in that timeframe. Sixty-four were actually traffic accidents where people collided for one reason or another. Forty-one were hit and runs. And we have, some of the accidents include property damage. There was only three accidents in the upper residential area where a lot of people complained they had the the worst speeders in town and all that. There was only three accidents up there and they were property only, only accidents where they hit a parked car, hit a building, hit some, usually someone lost control. So the point of all this is where I'm going with my stats is the majority of our traffic is on the main arteries of Wayrica, not in the upper residential areas. People are going to speed, people speed everywhere. Um, people run stop signs everywhere, but it's not that bad up in the residentials. The good thing is, is the city council has worked very hard at building the police department for me, which I really appreciate. And we've been returning the favor. Our officers have been just, just kicking butt out there. They really have. The year before, we wrote four hundred and eighty-five-ish tickets. Um, can't remember about my glasses. Last year we wrote nine hundred and eighty-something. We've doubled our citations in, in twelve months. We've made fourteen hundred and twenty-five traffic stops. We've done fifteen hundred traffic enforcements, which is directing traffic, picking up debris in the road. You know, something that helps. So there was fifteen and four, fifteen hundred and forty-one actual traffic related activities. And fourteen hundred of them were traffic stops. I did, uh, just doing some stats, kind of a hobby of mine. So I looked at eight thousand people in Wayrica roughly. People driving age from sixteen till, you know, maybe in their seventies, somewhere in there. There's roughly four thousand drivers in Wayrica. That's basically four out of ten citizens of Wayrica were stopped by the police. Obviously, some people are stopped more than once, but there's a lot of traffic enforcement going on. Daytime, we have a lot of outtowners, so the stats aren't true stats. But if you just look by population, we've stopped four out of ten actual drivers in the Wayrica. I looked at the Switters stats. Switters is a state organization that monitors all traffic accidents. You can access it online. Anyone can look it up. They don't have up-to-date current stats, but looking at twenty nineteen, Wayrica, we have half the accidents per population as a state in California. So the average in California for population is point four seven percent are involved in accidents. Wayrica is point two. So we're doing really good. Just some numbers for you, if you want to know some of our citations and what they're for. In that twelve-month period, we issued a hundred and seventeen unlicensed driver citations. That's people that don't have a license or it's expired. We issued ninety suspended driver's licenses who are suspended for DUIs or crimes or something else. Two hundred and thirty-four no insurance citations and two hundred and eighteen unregistered vehicles where they didn't pay the registration fees. And like I said, there was nine hundred and eighty citations with four twenty-eight being the year before. So traffic is doing pretty good in Wayrica. I'm very proud of my department. They're, they're really doing a good job with it. We have doubled citations and we have half the rate of accidents compared to California. So I think it's something to probably.
Absolutely. Awesome. Thank you.
You gotcha.
So.
We're going to go for questions.
Sure.
Chief Gilman. I just want to thank you for those stats, but in all honesty, that's no comfort for people who live on Nap Street. And I would encourage your officers to be on Nap Street after the high school gets out or between seven forty-five and eight o'clock, five fifteen to five thirty. Um, I'm, I'm glad that you guys are stopping people on the main drags, but really there is a problem in some of the neighborhoods. And, uh, you know, Ms. Daisy, the Doxen and I almost got hit by a car that had to be going fifty miles an hour by the time it got to my block. And I'm not exaggerating. Um, you know, a lot of people, they turn that corner from, uh, North Oregon on to Nap Street and you just hear them accelerate for two blocks. So I would appreciate um, some more, um, enforcement in some of the neighborhoods that, um, our main are arteries down to the main streets because I just see that as a real problem. And that is also the number one complaint I've received as a city council member.
I recognize that and I appreciate that. Um, a response to that would be, so for thirty-three years I've been doing this. And we have tried many different ways to enforce this. We even had a traffic log at one point where we were ordered to go sit at different intersections for an hour and work radar, um, up in the residential areas. The problem is, is we would get there and spend our hour there that we had to be there between seven and eight or something. And we'd get into domestic violence downtown. So we'd have to leave, we'd come back. In that hour we're there, we didn't see anything. Then you leave and then you get a phone call two hours later that someone's going seventy miles an hour on the street. It's extremely difficult for us to like, say, we're going to be at one spot because there are so many streets in Wayrica, typically only three to four officers working at a time to do that. So we're trying different ideas. We've been trying all sorts of different, uh, things to cover all the streets. One thing we talked about with the city manager was more, uh, traffic um, enforcement trailers that have the speed and some of the ones that have cameras, that's an option if the city wants to go that route. It's a decision I wouldn't make. That would be a decision for you if we were going to do like photo citations or something. And that's one way where we could put it somewhere where you wanted it and leave it. We average around a hundred calls a day. So it's really difficult for anyone on my department to sit in one location for an hour when they're going to a call about every twelve minutes. So it makes it really hard for us. It's not an excuse. It doesn't sound like a good excuse. I was hit head-on by a drunk driver once going home on my road, which is a busy street. So I understand the concerns. I just want people to understand it really isn't feasible for me to tell one officer, go sit at, you know, nine hundred block of West Minor Street for an hour, you know? And we have calls going on in town that we need bodies to go to the calls. So I don't want to promise that we can be there at five fifteen or seven forty-five. We do have a school resource officer now. Jackson Street's always been, uh, a high congestion area at Jackson, uh, by the school. And the high school has always been a problem since I was in high school. Nap Street has always been a drag strip, you know? So we do have a school resource officer now that before classes start, he does work on the pedestrians running out in front of the roads there on Main Street at the high school. So we have nap where the cars are speeding. We have all the kids at the start of class and lunchtime that are running out in front of traffic, uh, when they're crossing the street. So he's been working on those areas. So we are trying ideas. Terrorists, we get a lot of calls on terrorists and discovery, same thing, a lot of high school kids. You know? If you're getting kind of where I'm leading with this, it's more of a parental issue. I think the parents need to talk to their children more because almost all these complaints come from high school kids during lunch breaks and before and after school. That's terrorist, discovery, nap, all those streets right there.
Minor.
Yeah, minor. It's almost always the high school kids, which is sad to say. I, I did it when I was in high school too. I had a car. I used to race up there, you know?
She comes out.
Yeah. But that's, we need to focus on the families talking to the kids too, you know? Actually, when I was in high school, I was hit by a car walking to the big gym in the crosswalk. A guy ran into me. So it, I do recognize it, but it'd be very difficult for me to tell you I'll have someone there three times a day. So I don't want you to get upset if you don't see that tomorrow. Our guys are doing an amazing job. My department's working very hard at it.
Yes, your, your department does an amazing job. So I would just ask that you just kind of keep this in the back of your mind. And, uh, if it's a city council, uh, decision to get some of those, what did you call them?
So that they're like a traffic camera with a speedometer on it and it takes photos. Oregon uses them when you're in Bedford, you'll see a sign that says traffic enforcement by camera. Then you can see a man parked on the side of the road. Um, a lot of places use them, a lot of bigger cities use them. Sometimes the citizens get upset because they don't want photos taken of them running a stop sign or a stop light or something like that.
Of course not.
But it is a procedure that is possible. It is something.
Maybe, uh, with your budget submission, you might want to include some information on that. Just, just, uh, excuse me, I know I can't give direction, but just a consideration. Thank you.
It's a good comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Any other comments or questions?
Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. Okay. We'll go to. Oh. A barbecue. Mr. Lemus, want to come down and speak and preach to our citizens out there here and out listening about your fundraiser?
Yeah, exactly. So, um, yeah, we always talk about a lot of things are more on the heavy side, but, um, I'd like to say that it's been a couple of years since we've had a benefit, uh, fire department benefit. So he's been called, uh, oh, shoot, it was more of a formal thing back in the day. I mean, sure Drake remembers that and probably some others, but it's been a barbecue now for as long as I've been in the department. We pandemic was one year, another year, we just, just couldn't put it together. So, uh, March eleventh, um, five thirty to seven will be a, a social hour and then seven o'clock have dinner. We'll have prizes, raffle prizes, uh, trip to Hawaii, um, uh, rafting trip on the clamouth or, excuse me, uh, Rogue and many, many other prizes. It's similar, um, format to what it's been the last thirty years. We've purchased hundreds of thousands of dollars of, uh, fire and rescue equipment with that money. Um, uh, the jaws of life was the original, um, impetus for starting it and they purchased, uh, a set back in mid nineties, the first set we had. And that was, you know, seventeen thousand dollars and they paid that off within, you know, short, short order. So they, it's been a, a lot of fun. So I would in, in, encourage in any folks who are looking for a fun time, come out March eleventh. If you need tickets, um, I need a rusty Bigler and, uh, we'll just get ahold of any firefighter. You can call City Hall and they have my number. Um, six four three zero nine zero three, for those listening. Um, I can get you tickets as well. So we hope to see you there and, and show your support and then have a good dinner and might win a trip somewhere. So love to see you.
Sounds great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yes, very important fundraiser for our fire department that we're very lucky to have. So for our citizens to. Yes, very important fundraiser for our fire department that we're very lucky to have. So for our citizens to for fire association, thank you for correcting me. Very important. Might need to be corrected. Um so go, go and support them. They are great service for our city and it's always a good time, and we're going to quite a few of them several years ago. I don't think there's been one since I've been back. Maybe one, yeah. Yeah, it's been a while. Well, great. Okay, I will go to um council members for any um reports on their, their meetings that they've had. Anybody, do you guys had, do you have a VBD recently, want to report on?
Point in time, we haven't had our latest one on our, as far as that goes.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll start with you. Yeah, concerns or?
Yeah.
Whatever you want to talk about.
Um and actually our attorney, uh we've, you know, drafted up that shopping cart ordinance. And I know we've been moving forward with it and stuff. Uh we still don't have one outfit that's in compliance as far as I know. This has been going on what now for years or shopping places? What is? Yeah, what is our next step on getting compliance with this um outfit, which we know what we're talking about? I think it's, that's why I was wondering if this is not a question for our attorney, since he drafted up the ordinance. I think we're probably at that point where we need to start actually enforcing it.
Yeah, I think uh Mr. Henyon probably could um answer this as well as uh Ms. Hogan, the Assistant City Manager. Because I believe at this point, you're looking at applying, you know, a lien or um basically trying to recoup the cost that you're proving are not getting paid. So I think I'll let the attorney speak to what the next steps are and then what the palate, you know, or what the appetite of the council is to progress. Uh uh at what point, you know, there's a tipping point, right? Where you're putting more money in than you're actually getting on the return, so that's.
Trying to figure out is where do we go from here, you know, if we don't.
I can tell that, I can tell that those on the DS are getting tired, so let me just pitch in here. I, I'm not sure that um uh exactly what the facts you're talking about are, Council Member Keg. Um but we have a progressive scale. Um we pick them up. Um and uh they have so much time to get them. And then if they don't get them, then we switch them to a mandatory um system where they have to hire a company to come and get their carts for them and bring them back. And is that the, is that the level we're talking about here? Or is it unpaid fines like uh uh Mr. Letted Bedder was referring to?
I think we got a combination of unpaid fines. I know that one outfit's actually complied and paid their fine.
He wants to know what level we are at with, I think, with one company, right?
What's our next step? Because it doesn't seem like they're going to comply.
So, so are they already on the automatic um, the automatic uh retrieval system? Have we mandated them to hire the company?
They have been talked to, and I don't believe that they currently have somebody, but Chief Gilman's going to come down and uh attest to this.
I know they had a manager train change, correct? And you've been working with a new manager, trying to get them back to speed, correct?
Correct. This is Chief Gilman again. Yeah, there is a company, I believe it's called Ram, something to that effect. Ray Lee's has signed up with them, and I believe Walmart is in talks to work with them. And so they're trying to work out some of their kinks and how this is going to work, but the company's been working with my code enforcement to pick up carts. So it is, there is some slow progress, but there is a lot of fines out there also. But there is a company that's working with at least two of them right now. I think it came, came out of Chico somewhere out of there.
So as I heard, it's out of Chico. I don't know how productive they're going to be being out of Chico.
They've been pretty helpful so far. They've actually been responding to our calls, and they're just trying to figure out, do they pick them up on the street at the yard? You're just trying to work out kinks right now.
Well, you know how competition is. If uh Chico isn't responding uh efficiently enough, then somebody in town will say, hey, I need a job.
Well, yeah, we put it out there for quite a while, so I can play somebody to jump on it.
Where we go?
I know, that's, I guess.
Where, where do we go from here?
Don, where do we go from here?
That's what uh Councilman Keg's asking.
Yeah, um what I would like to do is um maybe um Councilman Keg um uh Mr. Ledbetter um and the chief can all get together and brief me on the situation so that I know what the facts are. And as soon as I know what the facts are, I will be able to advise you, and then I'll be able to look at this. This uh ordinance that I drafted a year, a year and a half ago, refresh my recollection and uh give you an answer.
Okay, fair enough. Sounds good.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Councilman Davis, any comments or questions or direction?
You know, um we had Mr. Ledbetter and Ms. Baker and I had a meeting with EDC. Uh it was pretty interesting. Uh they're pretty organized, and they're kind of moving forward with the, their programs. It was very uh, very uh informative as far as I could see. And they had a lot of uh enthusiasm for their jobs. And so I think when we hook up with the EDC, we will be moving forward rapidly, because they are pretty progressive. They go after things. Rust.
Great. Is that it? Thank you. Short and sweet. Councilman Baker.
No, thank you. Um, Mr. Ledbetter, thank you for putting together that meeting with the Economic Development Council for um Councilman um Davis and I. That was really, really informative. I really uh appreciated um the overview that they gave us. And I have a new appreciation and a new understanding of um how important they are to our community. So I want to thank you for that. Mr. Mason McCoy, thank you so much for a copy of your book. I'm going to enjoy reading it. I appreciate your thoughtfulness in giving us each a copy of that. Um this uh past couple of weeks, I've spoken, I was invited to speak at two different organizations. Um and uh that's always a lot of fun. So that's all I have.
Great. If I may ask, what did they invite you to speak about? The city, the problems? The future or anything else?
They just asked for an update on what's going on in the city, and of course, housing is a hot topic um and the um unhoused population. But um they also wanted me to talk about uh public participation at local government level, so.
Awesome. Which we, we've covered that tonight. Well.
Yes.
Next up. All right, Pro Tim McCoy.
Okay, I'm going to just cover one area. Um I am on the LTC, Local Transportation Committee. Um and I attended my first meeting. There's probably, I don't know, nine or ten of us there, eleven of us, and then another fifteen sitting in the gallery. Basically, we got audit results back. Um the audit results basically were um looking over kind of the the budget of particular grants, not everything, particular things. And there is actually a grant that we get that helps to pinpoint where we, what needs to be done within the county, because LTC is the local transportation county board. So there are people from South County, North County, all around. Um and so one of the things that they talked about was a failure to oversee the usage and spend all of that money. And so then that, it's not a lot, it's two hundred, I think, sixty thousand dollars. But when you have thirty or forty or fifty thousand left over, which our county has, our, our LTC, then it just goes down to LA or Redding or wherever, a bigger county. And so they, they asked for that to be uh, to have a better oversight. Um right now, there is no executive director. Um the person who is acting as, who's, who's running it is uh Melissa Cummins. Uh and then I think her, she gets a lot of help from Joy Hall. But um the, these two uh auditors also told us that um we needed to look at developing expectations for an executive director. Uh I guess the last director, depends on who you talk to, they quit or they weren't released. That doesn't really matter at this point in time. So um but the auditors recommended a new executive director to be hired. I guess there's an RFP out for that already, even though there is no expectations for the executive director, which is what we were also um told by auditors, we needed to do. Anyway, uh in addition to that, so we're working on the executive director. In addition to that, there is uh, they have asked for the formation of a separate board. The LTC, um the, the, those of us that sit with, with the LTC should, we can be sitting on a board with the stage, but stage needs to have its own board. And so that's pretty simple to go back in and get. They're, they're already working on getting rules and regs from other counties. But um the biggie, I think, is going to be overseeing, you know, overseeing that small grant, which is seen to be very large to these two auditors. And then um on our part, one of the things that I, and I appreciate any feedback I can get from you, either here or at another meeting or privately. If you want to give feedback, it's where I, we need to let them. Dollars are not, these ladies, the auditors told us, dollars are not just to run a stage. They're not just to run transportation. These dollars are provide a good area of transportation in our city. That means streets. That could mean, you know, street money. You know, so if they're, you know, like a million or two million or three million dollars comes up. You know, that's an, an area that I'm gonna, I need your input on, you know, what you individually all think. So, and you can give to me at any time, you can call me, you can give me an meeting, whatever, we can put it on. But it's just a thought. We meet every, usually Tuesday, second Tuesday.
I believe so, yeah. It's uh, I think you take a, a month or two off, but generally it's once a month, yeah.
Yeah, public meeting. So if you want to come and sit in on it, it's quite fascinating for me to, to be sitting. Public meeting for everybody. And it's down at the conference room at the stage, right down there across from the veterinarian.
Green Horn in Oregon.
Yep, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
That's it?
Thank you.
Guess I'll be very brief. How are you pitched for the Fire Hall Dinner? So that's sort of the, for the association. Um, thank you for the book. I just realized, I looked down and just realized you wrote it. I didn't know you wrote it, so thank you. Very exciting. Looked down a wave. That's, he wrote it. So thank you for that. Um. I don't think I have much to um report. Um I think at the beginning, you know, we talked about meeting regarding the high school and we had a rain on their parade a little bit, but that's okay. It was a great idea. He was an enthusiastic young man who came and had courage, and we put him through a three and a half turbulent meeting that night. So he sat there and was still pretty energetic when time he got up there, which um but they have an alternative, so um I'm going to have the council move forward to allowing them to have that space, because their only option was to have the YMCA, uh and I think that would have been I don't know, it seems like they have a lot of things there, so they're a little more excited about the um community center, so. And who, who mentioned that a lot of these kids that are juniors and seniors have never, was it Reda, or was it Emily Reda? Or Emily, I can't remember, who have never um been or seen the community center because of COVID. So they were like seventh or eighth graders, and so they've never seen the community center, because it's been closed. So they didn't even really know about the space. They knew it existed over there, they said, but they'd never been in it. So um that was kind of interesting to think that some kids during junior high haven't seen some of our buildings or participated in quite a few things, because of the pandemic. That was kind of an eye-opener, so um anyways, I'm gonna leave with that, and thank everybody for coming. And always pass along to your fellow citizens to join us every first and third Tuesday. If this is your city, your input's always welcomed. And we hope we get more people. We like to see it filled, you know, and because this is, this is, you know, this is your city, and any ideas you bring to us, it helps us to better serve you. So thank you for coming and have a good night.